The agenda to the Bible reading from June twenty fourth to July fourth.
I make a motion. Second.
Second. No, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I like the motion to approve the agenda. Oh, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, same time I'll take a motion to prove the amendment to the agenda.
To approve the amendment to the agenda.
Is there a second?
We'll say it.
Move in second to approve the amendments to the agenda. All is very sorry. All same side, okay. Rich.
Morning. Morning. We're gonna try to spend a little bit of time for that. We have a project before. Also. I'm gonna put an offer out to an individual for secondary roads. So they're gonna probably bring in a couple more to interview you. There's one that I feel officially well and a couple more on bringing. It's been a little bit small, but I haven't been in the office that much either, so. Try to get that done sometimes we've too, so. We're probably going to evaluate a little bit. Since fuel prices are high, you know, how much blading we do this year. We do more spot blade than full runs, we'll see what that looks like. They will still try to keep the roads in good, good shape, but when it's hard and dry out, there's no sense in spreading dust around it. There's nothing we can do with the roads, so we'll do a little bit evaluation around fuel costs and things like that. We may slow down a little bit on the blading, use some other things too. But everything is, everything is related to fuel and morning, all the costs going up, everything else, so. We did get our two motor breeders in last week, the used ones, so we're going through them and getting them ready to. And I will probably order a couple of extensions for the wing or the mold boards on those in a little wider stance on it. We can swap a few out from the other machines, but we'll get them going, so just kind of a quick update there. Looks to me I drove past. Anderson's Greenwich, it looks like they got that done. Peterson got that done, so.
Yeah, okay. Just in time for another big explosion.
Yeah, right. Any questions? That's all I can think of right now, I'm just kinda, I just got in five minutes ago. Inspection.
You take a look at that for again.
Yeah, we'll look at it, it's been an ongoing thing for years.
Okay, well, obviously those underhides.
Well, and it's been evaluated too, I know that there's, that property to the north is. Designated, I think it's wetland or they're trying to create wetland, and I know the ground on the other side is, is probably. Pretty wet ground just because it's lower than the upstream side, and I think there's actually pumps pumping water, so. I'll, I'll look at the letter a little bit and go back and read the site.
Alright, appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Rich. Flame, greenings. Nothing branch today claims. Is there any questions on flame?
Motion to approve flames. I'll second it.
Moving second for the discussion. There are none also to say aye. Same time.
Motion to approve reports.
I'll second it. Second, in the group discussion. There are none, all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
If they will.
Yeah, I got a couple posts this time, and then one that's coming up. You tell people all the time that you need to approve before wages change, and I don't forget anymore, so.
So we have one from the county near. Two from the show. So. And for this, with John Smith. Seasonal, more guys, Gary Brunspole, Chris Fought, Terry.
And that's like a dollar from last year, from what I was told.
Yep, yes.
Taking motion to prove the payroll changes. I'll make a motion to approve the payroll change.
One second.
For the discussion. There are none also in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Post since I'm getting to something.
Yeah.
Okay, again, I guess we didn't place an air, but let's take a action on the Bible reading then, right here. EMA, taking motion to approve the Bible, Bible reading from June twenty four to July fourth.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there any further discussion? There are none also in favor to say aye. Post same sign, motion cares, okay. Emergency, emergency medical service advisory council, so you must have got some.
Yep, we actually complete list now. Every fire entity and sheriff supervisor, EMS, they're all represented now, so we've got ten people with eleven different entities, so. Just like, I'll make a motion to approve the EMS advisory committee.
Sure, second, I'll second that. It's been moved in second and there is any further discussion, there are none also in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Post same time, motion will care. Well, thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Alright. You got it. I can't. Everybody. See that?
When the numbers get that big, the increases just seem like they're crazy, but they're probably, yeah, it just, it just moves faster.
Even though I'm can collecting things up front.
Not about it, yeah.
Shot pay insurance on that?
Yeah.
If somebody would hit it or something, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I will take a motion to. Approve the ICAP renewal. I'll make that a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Move in second, is there any further discussion? There are none also in favor to say aye. Post same time. There's two, isn't there, at least, so.
And normally they have something in there about suggestion, suggested. Increases in coverage, and I, I didn't see any that they listed up here this year, so I, I just marked it anyway that they're just waving it.
Not wanting to increase it.
And I'm still not sure what that does with cyber coverage either, I don't know if that's in there or not.
So there is, I mean, we can cover it now or we can cover it when we talk about.
Well, we're talking about insurance, let's go ahead and so.
Okay. Um, so we have always had, and I'm not gonna mention amounts right now, we've been talking about those offline, I just don't want to do those in a public meeting. But in the past, we've always been, had cyber coverage up to a certain level as part of our general policy. That amount has gone down in the last couple of years just because of the, the cyber incidences and the cost of cyber insurance, so. Last year, I was not able to procure anything above that amount, just because underwriters weren't touching anybody. Did talk Cory, and he did get me some paperwork to make another application, apparently ICAP has secured other cyber underwriters. So the document you guys are gonna see today is that application, so there's a site survey in there that we have to fill out saying we're doing this, 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 and this, and this. But with that in mind, if I'm saying we're doing this, 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 and this, then we, we have to start, you know, the only thing I, I think we're about. On the fishing and cyber education, I think we hit about eighty percent last year, so I'm gonna push that a little harder just to make sure everybody gets it done this year. You know, if, if you touch a county computer or if you have a county email. Do that cyber education.
It was fairly easy again, it was a little more complicated, but it was actually, it doesn't take that long to sit down and do it.
Yeah, I even threw something from South Africa in there by mistake, so. But, you know.
Some people did it anyway.
Yeah, the, the multi-factor, you guys, I think you saw the email I sent out to the department heads, that is rated rock and roll, we're gonna implement that next month, so.
It's all part of keeping the cost down.
Yep. It's, it's just like any other insurance, there's certain things we have to do to reach that, so. That's the backing you guys are gonna have for me.
Does that mean we have to switch off this three sixty five?
That is in the plan. Yes, that's in the plan.
It's more secure.
It's got, well.
Or better features, whatever.
For the money, so, you know, if, to get the same, if, if we stick with Gmail and to get the same security level with Gmail as we would three sixty five, we pay about three times the amount. They've, Gmail for some reason is really kind of. Better around a little bit, the other thing with three sixty five is Gmail is not CGS compliant, and CGS is of course the criminal justice stuff for the sheriff's office and the county attorney. The only platform right now that's CGS compliant is three sixty five, so that's another reason to, to make that go.
Okay. So we have a document we're looking at approving.
There's a signature, I think.
Oh, was there a signature, yeah.
Yeah.
On the, oh, I didn't print it out.
Oh, I didn't print it out.
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
So.
Yeah.
We would need approvals, like as I said.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion one to. Yeah, the application for. Cyber, right?
Yeah.
Building insurance.
Yep.
Motion to approve the.
Is there a second? It's moving seconds, there any further discussion? There are none also in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Post same time, motion will carry.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Discuss or approve the fourth amendment to child support county staffing contract between Iowa Department of Human Services Bureau Collection Floyd County Post Political Subdivision.
This is something that pops up every once in a while. Floyd County is graciously still agreeing to be the, the financial agent, which.
That might be changing.
Or.
No, I'm just saying that we was on another meeting the other day, and I know she said they're, they were asked to do another, you know, financial.
And she's retired, and she's retiring.
Well, that's maybe the reason, you know, so the new one maybe will.
And we have already taken a turn, cause it was just finishing up when I got here, but that was nine years ago, so.
You know, a lot of county auditors are getting overloaded with wanting to be financial officers for other organizations, and it's.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
This is.
This is it, over buckets. Good.
Yeah, it's pretty good. In all favor.
Yep, I'm motion to approve the child support staffing contract.
Just a second.
I'll second it.
Need for the discussion. Okay, all's better say aye.
Aye.
Post same time, motion will carry, so. I guess I'm supposed to sign here, right?
Yeah, and then Jeff signs, I didn't get him before he left, so we're gonna be waiting for me.
Right, go on, let's speak.
I think in the next.
In the next week, he's going to attorney school right now. Okay. Bike trail discussion.
Well, I, uh. Got calls from Myron and Jason here a couple weeks ago, wanted to bring this discussion back up table. On the bike trail between fertile and Hamlet Town, so I told him I would. Bring it back here and. Discuss it again, so.
You for that opportunity, I passed out a handout, just kinda to give an update of where we've been, it's been quite a journey. Jane and I started a number of years ago, and then we had a lot of stuff like COVID that kinda threw those curves in there, so I gave you an update, but. You've had a lot of questions, hopefully we've gotten those answered. One of the big questions was maintenance, we don't wanna burden the conservation board, so the last two pages is a memorandum of understanding, it's just a draft, but we took it to each of the city councils. And they agreed to do with the basic maintenance of the trail, so we're hoping to eliminate that burden. There's just tremendous community support down there, and through COVID, we've learned how important trails are to everybody, and we just figured it's a short four mile trail along the river. We gotta kinda work through where it would go with the quarry, they have a lot of leases in place on that property, so. The exact route is not determined, but Jason's been doing a feasibility engineering study, and to complete that study, he has to know who will own the trail and who will maintain it. So that's kinda where we're at, we're looking to ask the county to take that role. And that's what most of the other counties do, is have the town on and maintain the trails. What questions do you guys have? Jason, do you have anything to add?
No, we've brought this here before, at least once.
Is this, is this the one right along the river again?
Yeah.
What about access for emergency vehicles?
To be on the trail, like.
And what about non-access for vehicles just traveling the roadway, driving down it?
We have to have bollards on the ends.
Is it gonna be able to have two-way traffic? So we get an ambulance down there and a fire truck in front of the ambulance, so they can turn around or get around them to get out of there.
Um, I guess that's something we could figure out during fine design phase, but we're making a two-lane road that's gonna double your cost here.
Right. I'm just, I mean.
Most of them are right along a roadway, like when a bagel comes, they're right along highway nine, we're the access for emergency, if we have someone fall off a bike or have a heart attack, we can get to them.
Not a league, both are, higher departments are booked with side-by-side type of vehicles for, for emergency access. There'd be, need to be.
If they respond.
Yeah, it'd need to be at least a ten-foot wide trail, and there could be planning for turnarounds along the route there for, for larger vehicles like that.
All those requirements have really been updated in the last few years, so those are things we'd have to implement into the design.
Yeah, and we haven't done any final design on this, by any means, so far it's been planning. Looking at the big picture, putting together some costs, identifying some financing, there's some grant type of programs. But in order to pursue any grants, we need a, an owner, there needs to be an owner on any application.
Jim? Turned you.
My biggest concern, like, I mean, I've said it every time, it's just whether or not we're gonna have the financial support from this board. You know, without.
By adding something else, you know, we're looking at, to, to keep up with stuff, you're probably gonna see a lack in other services, right?
Well, I know, that's one concern I brought up with these guys too, is that, you know, the, the maintenance portion, we don't have the manpower, so, I mean, if the cities do that. That's only way it would have to be that way, you know, I just hope that those cities will remain doing it, you know, because eventually. You know, councils change, this board changes, you know what I mean? Right. That's all I'm wary of is, is this group, they may think it's fine, the next group may not, you know, and I just don't wanna see. But that, that's.
That need to be formalized with a twenty eighty agreement, I mean, we, we put together that memorandum of understanding just for discussion with the city councils. Before anything proceeded, there'd need to be a twenty eighty regarding who's responsible for what maintenance, what construction costs, all those items. Both, both communities said they have volunteers that can do this, and my response was there's no teeth with volunteers, we need the community behind it, the city councils, not just. A group of volunteers that can walk away tomorrow.
Right.
But both towns have the equipment, they have the tractors and things to clean the branches off and pick it up, and I told Jason, let's design it right, so it requires minimal maintenance, you know. Get a good rock foundation under it, build it right.
We know Jim outside the maintenance issue. Is you, your board okay, or what's your board's thoughts?
I would say they're split, probably just because they've been burdened by bike trail stuff before.
Okay.
You know, when, when the trail going to Carpenter was gonna happen, and I got pulled out and we were gonna get hung with. It was before my time, but they, the conservation board was gonna get hung with the cost of the trail because it was through granite, and that's why there's the trail of the fairgrounds. Alright, so I have a couple that are, that were part of that process, they got burned, and so. It, it may sound bad to say it, but even having a twenty eighty agreement with us, the small cities like that. If the city goes away from having their own maintenance crews, it's back on us, right, I mean, it's back on us right now.
Right, with, yeah, without any funding at that point.
So I would say my board is, I mean, and my board has cyclists, I mean, it's just, they understand that we've been burned before, and they don't wanna be burned again, and I, I get where they're coming from, right?
So doing it right, Jason, what do you think, like, long-term, what do you, what do you, what would be your estimate on long-term maintenance costs and something like that, just for, just for base maintenance and stuff?
How long-term, ten years, twenty years?
Well, you know, roads are ten, twenty, you know, I mean, and this, I mean, I understand it's not gonna be the weight bearing, you know, those kind of things, but we could have flooding issues down there. You know, I've heard estimates roughly five thousand dollars a mile is maintenance cost on these trails, it's that.
Yes, without, I wouldn't see that for ten years at least, before there'd be costs like that. We talked to one of Mayo County Conservation, they have the one from Four City Pilot Knob, and I could expect two or four thousand dollars since they built that trail.
Yeah, that's been quite a while.
And that's in a road ditch, and.
Yep.
Less scenic location, obviously, but.
Well, his goal was to get.
Easier to maintain, easier for emergency access. And we looked at other alignments, you know, less scenic, long roads.
Cory's a big issue there.
He's a huge issue, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna design a trail along that Cory road.
Right.
Before we do that, we don't need to put bicycles along that road.
No. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's. I'm definitely a supporter of trails, but I'm fearful of the long-term cost of these things, and, and, you know, how we're gonna fund these. And especially with some of the stuff we have going on in the company right now.
And any long-term cost, there'd need to be a commitment for twenty years, that's what it is. As far as the resolution supporting it and saying that we'll keep it open and operational for twenty. Concrete trail, there wouldn't be much for maintenance, unless it's a natural disaster that I can't predict or control.
Right, right. Right.
And, and like I said, to, for these guys to take the next, next step, somebody's gotta own the thing, and. I do get that too. I'm sure there is plenty of funding out there, I know there's plenty of funding out there. The ability, the opportunity to get it is.
It's getting it, I mean, I've always heard, you know, a lot of it has to do with connectivity, and a lot of it has to do with, Sarah Verde County's done a good job getting me money, and they got a lot of. Trails, but they've got a lot of connectivity, and so they're, you know, they're in some of the bigger counties, always seem to get the upfront money before we give a chance at it, but you do have to have that base and start with me.
And that's one of the recommendations Jim has, that that location gives us good connectivity options.
Right.
Which really helps the funding, future funding. Cause our goal would be possibly to connect Pilot Knob or go down Sarvoata County, go past the Buddy Holly crash site or something like that, come up Wheelerwood and connect with the. You know, welcome center and then span out from there. Nycog had a plan a number of years ago, right?
Concept, we'll see, Jake Woodwell was still the mayor of Northwood, when he did that plan, I'm sure, cause I think she represented Northwood.
Probably is, before we were together, yeah.
As far as my two cents on the public safety side of it, I'm all for bike trails, I don't like the ones where we don't have a lot of access to them. For patrolling and safety and security, it makes a big issue for us.
You don't have to avoid.
Yeah.
Of course, the bike ride on a couple of spots there.
Yeah.
Your burger works, or, or wellness program.
We need Jeff's. Now on the legality of.
I would.
How we're gonna own the land.
Yeah. He should be part of that discussion, absolutely, it should be part of the discussion for legality purposes, liability purposes. You know. Yeah.
And I've talked to most of the landowners, long they don't wanna sell, but they would sign an easement.
Use an easement or a lifetime lease? What would be the proper.
Don't wanna sell any land, whichever would be in the best interest of the county.
I think they'd be better off selling it, cause that's been a ceremony. Be my opinion.
You just got land spent in the family for years and years, and they just don't wanna.
Yeah, no, I get that, yeah, that's, yeah.
That their bike wipes out on their part of the trail.
Well, that's gonna. For issue with the ripper, we just come through, and that's, like I say, would, to me, it would limit their liability if they weren't to own it anymore, but. Yeah. Yeah, cause then the county would be the owner.
So we're spreading risks. We're spreading risks.
We are in this situation, I mean, yeah, it's, yeah, so, but I mean, I get not wanting, so I go into. But they're willing to get an easement, whatever, it's, it's a plus. It'd be pretty much a lifetime easement, I assume.
So.
What kind of monetary? What do they want for these?
Yeah, was there any discussions in there? Cause. Cause I know Mitchell County ran into that, where they had one section of trail that they needed to get, and it cost them a ton of money, right, Rich?
Yes, it did.
Just to get, I mean, less than a mile, I mean, it was just literally crossing state line, wasn't it?
It's an old railroad bed.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, you know, one owner could be, I mean, they all seem like it, but if they.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I talked pretty much all the landowners, they were in shape, but a lot can change.
Oh, yeah.
New ownership.
Marriage.
Kids don't want that.
Yep.
But before we talk to any more landowners, we need to. Keep our, move on and. Get some more background information.
And we are getting some concessions from the two towns that they're gonna, you know, do their best to maintain this for more than just a year, you know, I mean.
A long-term commitment. Well.
The difference.
Are you looking for an answer today, or?
Right now.
Look into it too.
Yeah. That's what you'd like to see is.
Probably let you, yeah, look at it and just. See what his, his recommendations are. I don't know if you, if your board, Jim has talked about it recently, but.
The last thing we did was when we signed the memorandum of understanding, cause our, our, even though I said the board's divided, our board is still supportive of. Right. I mean, it, like I said, the biggest fear is, is getting hung with all the costs and no money to pay for it, but.
Do I have the cities agreed to at least a term that says we'll take care of it for at least ten years?
We never put terms to it, that's further discussion, I, I'd say they need more than ten years.
Well, just, just throwing in.
Yeah, would need to be discussed.
Yeah. Cause I mean, that limits, I mean, that gives, takes a little pressure off you or us for budgeting, I mean, you know, other than two general maintenance, which wouldn't be that, you know. Putting in, patching in a piece of concrete, or maybe taking it out, putting it in, wouldn't be the end of the world. So.
Well, and who, who's the better owner when it comes to funding mechanisms and stuff like that?
Who would be?
Yeah, it's like.
County would be, especially for the funding from the state.
You wouldn't want to be like a Bible study or something like that.
The cities can't own outside of their city limits either.
So the. County, even, even with a two-mile radius.
Like, I think, isn't that what they, isn't that why they decided that the county would actually own, when we think had this conversation? I was thinking they stopped it there. Incorporated by. I was thinking they stopped it there, incorporated boundaries that they couldn't.
I mean, they can take two mile radius.
That'd be a better question for Jeff.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that's why Jeff needs to be involved, I'm not, we're not trying to put you on the spot, but. And I mean, yeah, cause going forward long term, if if trails continue, the county would have definitely be more involved.
But for the, like, for, you know, the transportation alternative money, which is state. Cities can get it, there's equal chance of them getting it as the county is. You know, on the committee, it's all the, all the big cities that have trails also have people that sit on that committee as well, so.
Right.
So then the construction would have to go through somebody's budget.
Correct, yes.
What do you see the neighboring counties do, how do they do that?
It depends on the pro, in, cause like Ventura, Ventura does its own trails that go up, and that, and that's where. Iowa's in a unique situation, it's not like Minnesota where the state owns all the trails, you know, in Iowa, you have. Small cities, big cities, counties, and states, you know, there's all, all those different entities own. And they don't, they might have twenty E's, so people will just keep cleaning a trail, but they don't. You know what I mean?
They don't build each other's trails.
They don't build each other's trails, everybody builds their own trail essentially.
Yeah.
It's like in Ventura, you know, as you wrap around the lake and come up through the grid, that's city trail, it's not county. Then there's little portions, once you get out to the the road where you go back. From going south, if you go back east, there are sections that are county trail then, and it, it leave grounds like that.
The D and R maintains.
Yes.
Well, yeah.
That's a lot of paperwork. That sounds like a trunks.
Yeah, well, that's definitely, definitely, yeah, well, I guess, I mean, it's, I think right now, as today looks, it's basically a discussion I am, but I mean, I think if the cities would come back, you know. Maybe like you said, one year agreement that they're gonna maintain that. Do the maintenance on it, I mean, the cleaning and the trees and the sweeping, snow removal and that, then I think. I would probably be definitely be a little more interested moving forward with this, I still definitely have money concerns long term. Right now, you're not asking for any funding from the county.
I believe there's plenty of sources out there.
Okay.
We just need the owner and maintenance so that, so he can go forward with his engineering report.
I do foresee the possibility of connecting that to Sarvo County. Before, we actually probably pursue much more in Worth County, to be honest, or connecting with one of Bayou County. Like there's that option there, they've been a little more aggressive on trails, yeah, so, um, it could be a. Sort of go to Winnebago County connectivity type of situation, could bring some good funds to the area, where. Yeah, yeah, if we can get that, I definitely.
But then while we're talking about that, we talked about possibly putting hard shoulders on, we don't would when they got resurfaced, what's the options there?
It's, the dollars would be the issue, you know, they're definitely wide enough, I mean, you look at them, they're wide enough. Well. And I don't know, you know, when you're talking.
Put a bona fide trail on the highway, and you're talking five foot paved shoulders on each side.
Yeah.
And then you still need a buffer between that and traffic, so you're wider than that, or right away.
I, yeah, I, that's where I, I have a little, yeah, making a shoulder, designating the trail, I mean, you've talked a couple bicyclists that have been very happy what you did in one oh five. And I know that's always been an issue with you, but, so it's roughly what, a thirty inch area that they ride on?
Well, it's a three foot widening on there, so it's thirty six, well, you still got your, and strike whatever else, it's not the best. Place to ride a bike, but it's better than what it was.
Well, we just thought we would, it'd be a lot safer than one oh five, you know.
I just, I I guess that's where I would go, I mean, as, and I don't mean, but where it was only like a three or thirty inch area that would be striped. I mean, and I, you know, how much, how much more base work, how much more, you know, if we do an overlay on that road. If we widen it out that extra, would that be?
The options are to, instead of putting a grain or shoulder down, pave the shoulder.
Right.
And then you wouldn't need a grain or shoulder, but. But. That adds costs. And then, but, I mean, you're not, if you're gonna mark it as a trail, that's a whole different subject, if you wanna pave shoulders.
Well, that's where, that's where, that's where I'm going, and I guess when I went with that, that's where I was going, I I think it. You know, for the time being, if it was possible, if it wasn't a huge spend, just to go that extra, just that, you know, cause like I said, a lot of bicyclists that ride are pretty comfortable with that. That strip of pavement. And to get you off there, I mean, I used to ride a lot, ride that road in the mornings, it got a little uncomfortable because of the semi traffic on there, you know, there gets to be a lot of grain going to. But I, I think with that extra. With pathway, I would have been more comfortable riding it myself than I, I was riding right on the road, you know, you try to ride on the white line. You know, trucks do not slow down, even though legally they are supposed to slow down before they zip around you, but. You know, it's just a thought.
Yeah, no, those are, those are options, obviously, to pave the shoulder, but the minute you put signs up saying this is designated trail, you open another can of worms.
Yeah, I would have a little, I I just make it more like share the road type of situation, I think, you know, and it would be based off the casino that way, or it would take you, you know. You know, maybe we should look at going up to the state line, but you know, that's not possible. Yeah, they are a little narrow. It's narrow, but that's just, just between casino and Hamilton is pretty nice. Wide shoulders for some reason.
Yeah, there's, there's options, obviously, yeah, to do something with it when we get. To do some paving on that. Personally, get those cracks fixed. They'll probably get fixed when it'll be three times, but yeah, you're right.
It's pretty tumpy, tumpy. They're getting there too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, three or four years.
Yeah. I mean, that's my opinion.
Jeff, give us his opinion on it.
Talk to the councils.
Specific information you want him to determine?
Basically. What kind of agreement we need with the cities to. The best type of agreement we need with the cities to get a guarantee.
Easements.
You know, and then, yeah, easements on that land versus. Owning it, you know, is what's.
Turn it.
Where's the liability at, I guess, with, with that stuff?
I probably have to go two weeks probably before you give that answer.
Yeah, well, and you, you're gonna wanna meet with the councils again, I'm assuming, and I'm not sure where they're at on their meetings.
Been a while, we could have had staff changes, so.
Probably last week.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Now, I'm sure.
And it's just personal opinion here, if we could look at that twenty year agreement where they're gonna do the, you know, the stick pickup, the sweeping, the snow removal, and then I think. Bring it, we would be definitely interested, I would definitely be interested in looking at this memorandum of understanding, I guess, definitely.
Just depends on the section of the trails.
Yeah.
Cause if that has limited access, would you want it, want the snow removed after that?
I don't think you see the bicycling as much in the winter time, but, I mean, I should take that back, cause there's a lot of fat tire riders that might do that in the winter time, but there's walkers that would. You know, both towns would utilize that trail.
But you can get to that.
Right.
Well, here they have starting points in both towns, so you, we, you lock out as far as you wanna turn or go back.
Right, and their, each town would go out so far and come back, so. I would assume there'd be a memorandum of understanding from each town, I mean, you know, to, I mean, which we wouldn't necessarily. They've agreed to set them on whatever miles or whatever, so.
Right.
It is gonna be one of the most scenic places in Worth County, where you could put a trail, you know, when you think about it, other than going through some of our county conservation, which we can't do. Unfortunately.
I just kinda wonder if lanes will even.
They came to the last meeting.
The last meeting, yeah.
So I, I, yeah.
After.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't say much, but, you know, they were, they were, they're listening, and I think they're still.
That's what scares me, is that something like that happening again?
Yeah. Well, I, no, I fully agree. So that's why we wanna make sure we have some attorneys involved in this and.
Then trying to keep motorized vehicles off of it, with your smallbills, your ATVs, it'll be a headache for us.
Well, there can only be so many places to, so, yeah. And hopefully that's, I don't know if other trails have had that issue or not throughout the state, I guess I've never. Never.
I know, smallbills usually have their own marked trail.
I was gonna say.
I don't mention kind of we parallel one trail that goes into McIntyre, but we're not on it, or they groom the side and.
Right, occasional rebel that wants to take a shortcut.
But they don't, you know, there's still a hard pack on it too, so.
But, yeah.
There's been a lot of community sports, so I think you'd probably have a lot of community policing, you know, if somebody's abusing it or not doing the right thing.
Right. Yeah.
Alright, we'll go with Jeff.
Okay, yeah, check with the city councils and then, you know, let us, just let Jackie know when, uh, we're back on the agenda for action or discussion.
Anything else you need, Jason?
I made a list.
Thank you. Alright.
Oh, it's okay, um, Jason's still here for the.
Oh, on the operation maintenance thing.
Okay, so we jump down to that before we.
We're meeting.
We have nine tenths of it.
We're meeting with, it's, we're just, we're meeting with peoples on Wednesday morning. So hopefully we'll have more info and maybe something next week for sure, but, uh, yeah, Wednesday morning, we're meeting with them, so we can get that.
Okay, thank you. It's gonna be here before you know it.
Yeah.
You've got more to do. Okay, so then, should we go back to the primary election candidates? Budgetary, okay. So we need to recess. I'll take a motion to open the budget amendment hearing.
Almost.
Second.
Over.
I.
Stone. Maybe, alright, okay. Budget amendments.
There are a few that. Biggest one, well, yes, the second biggest one, um, is. Oh, gas line study, so that we can reimburse for that.
Yeah.
I already forgotten about that.
Yeah.
We need to cut a check in the next week. Um, so that was that, and that even died on both sides, um, construction was, um, for. Rich, if he ends up, um, purchasing equipment this month or this year versus next year. And then, I put some more in the medical examiner, cause they're seeing bills just seem to keep coming, I, I just don't wanna. End up, and I know we're kinda, we could probably push some to April, but we don't want people to wait. And then I put five thousand into health and medical services under that budget too, just in case, cause there's lots of transports and different stuff like that. Um, insurance, the forty five twenty five is the amount that ran through us for the fairgrounds. They're under our insurance policy, but they did the repairs, so. I, I deposited the check, cut them a check, and then they took care of the repairs. I don't know if you remember, the, the tree landed on the fence, and then I think there might have been something to the quantity or something, I'm not sure. Yeah, yeah, the December.
December storm. No.
Um, workman's comp, I, I bumped that by ten, but I, I, I think we're gonna be under that, so. I, I just wanted to be sure, um, the fifteen hundred for Shell Rock, and then the hundred twenty eight, yeah, so. That's what's in there.
Shell Rock, is that a?
A watershed.
Yeah.
Watershed we approved. Contributes.
Cause I just had the, see, after Cedar wanted to, they're discussing that too.
They want money too?
Well, not, they're, they're not to that point yet, but they are to the point where. We can't get enough board members showing up for the meeting, because there's, nobody's got any skin in the, skin in the game anymore, because of all the funds have run out. And it's just something they've been discussing, and I, there was no ask at the last meeting, anything like that, so.
I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not remembering, but do we have a twenty eight E agreement with them?
Shell Rock.
That has to do with the fifteen hundred and everything, cause I.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
Anyway, okay.
Anybody has questions?
Is there any comment from the public? Again, is there any comment from the public? Very none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Moving to second, for discussion, here none, I'll take a roll call over. So, maybe I, motion will carry, I will reconvene the regular meeting. I will take a motion to approve the budget amendments.
I'm gonna have to most approve the budget amendments.
Is there a second?
I will say.
Move to second, is there any further discussion? Is there none? Close the same sign. Alright, now we're gonna go to the primary election.
That's a full batch.
Well, it was on my calendar, I was just curious.
It was on my calendar.
But there was no agenda, so.
Well, in March that town, right?
Well.
John's gone.
Okay, it was on my calendar for some reason.
I don't, cause we were.
It's just, it's reoccurring, but there was no agenda, so I didn't know if that's, I didn't mean to kick you out.
No, but.
I don't have it on my calendar.
I don't know why it's on mine, but.
So, so for me, it must be that I only get when he says that.
Okay, the agenda.
The agenda.
Okay, some reason I just noticed it was on mine. Why, I don't know. I guess, I get a lot of meetings on here, I'm not sure why they're on.
In there, cause I don't wanna forget them, but then we don't get them again.
So this one is an automatic entry, I didn't.
I guess I can sit till ten thirty and see if, okay, if he shows up and says, hey, we're doing this.
Alright.
It's out of town.
Good, we're out of. He's on there, but.
Nobody not.
He's gonna.
Available until.
Boy, look, Jeff, today's is the off.
So you're following that. Alright, you're following this one. Yeah, how about you just keep those, and you'll have that one, um, those are gonna be just the federal and state ones. That's, those two are gonna be everything, so you can just, you can debate basically just follow around along until you don't have a statement. Or county one. Okay, um, there were, um, for United States Senators, Rep, Republican. There were a total of. There are total votes of seven oh eight, oh, did you find, that should be on the font.
I was just scanning.
Oh, okay, um, there should be, um, seven oh eight total votes. Um, Jim Carlin had, and one, you're gonna have goofy numbers, because it adds even the undervotes and overvotes. You're gonna have the right number for, um, total votes, so, um, and that should be at the bottom, so that should be seven oh eight. Then Jim Carlin had two twenty five, Chuck Grassley had four eighty two. And there was one writing. Fifteen undervotes and zero overvotes. Um, for United States Representative District Two Republican, there were six hundred and forty seven total votes. Ashley Henson got six hundred and thirty nine, there were eight write-ins, seventy six undervotes, and you're not gonna have undervotes. Okay, um, total votes for Governor Republican, six sixty four. Okay, um, total votes for Governor Republican, six sixty-four, Kim Reynolds has six fifty-one, write-ins were thirteen, undervotes were zero. Or no, undervotes were fifty-nine, overvotes were zero. Secretary of State Republican, um, six hundred and thirty-four, Paul P, six twenty-eight, write-in six, undervotes eighty-nine. For Auditor of State Republican, five hundred and ninety-one votes, three hundred and twelve for Todd Halber, two twenty, or two seventy-seven for Mary Ann. And so.
Honors.
Yeah.
I think that's all you said.
Yeah. Um, write-ins two and undervotes, one thirty-two. Frederick State Republican, there were six hundred and four total votes, five hundred and ninety-nine for Robbie Smith, five write-ins and a hundred and nineteen undervotes. Secretary of Ag Republican, six hundred and seventeen votes, six hundred and thirteen for Mike May. Four write-ins and one oh six for undervotes. General Republican, six hundred and four total votes, Renner get five ninety-nine, there are five write-ins and a hundred and nineteen undervotes. State Senator District Thirty Republican, no votes, six sixty-five, Will Brown, six fifty-six, write-ins of nine, undervotes of fifty-eight. State Representative District Sixty. Seven hundred and fourteen total votes, Jane Bloomingdale got four ninety-two, Devon Hill get two twenty-one, one write-in vote and nine undervotes. County Board of Supervisors Republican. Um, twelve votes, they were all write-ins, and then there were a hundred and forty-two undervotes. Republican County Board of Supervisors District Three, twenty-seven votes, twenty-seven write-ins and two hundred and forty-four people undervotes. County Treasurer, the Republican, there were six hundred and seventy-five total votes, Jake Hanson got six seventy-two, there were three write-ins and forty-eight hundred. County Reporter Republican, there were six hundred and forty-five total votes, Teresa Olson got six thirty-two, there were thirteen write-ins. And undervotes of seventy-eight. Total votes for County Attorney Republican, five eighty-eight, Jeff Bree, five hundred and sixty-three, write-ins twenty-five, undervotes one thirty-five. Now we're to the Democrats, US Senator, um, there were one hundred Democrats, there were one hundred and eighty-three. Abby Finkhour got a hundred and ten, Michael Franken got fifty-nine, Glenn Hirsch got fourteen, and there were zero undervotes. United States Representative District Two Democrat, um, total votes one eighty, Liz Mathis got one eighty, and there were three undervotes. Governor Democrat, there were a hundred and seventy-three total votes, Deidre got a hundred and seventy-three, there are zero write-ins and ten undervotes. Secretary of State Democrat, one hundred and seventy-one total votes, Joel Miller had a hundred and twenty-six, Eric Van Meeker forty-five, zero write-ins and twelve undervotes. Auditor of State Democrat. Vote for one, the total votes one seventy-four, Rob Sand one seventy-four, zero write-ins, undervote nine. Treasurer State Democrat. Total votes one seventy-eight, Michael L Fitzgerald, one seventy-eight, write-in zero, undervote five. Secretary of Ag Democrat, um, total votes one seventy-five, John Norwood, one seventy-five, zero write-ins, eight undervotes. Number, um, Attorney General Democrat, total votes one seventy-eight, Tom Miller one seventy-eight, write-in zero, undervotes five. State Senator District Thirty Democrat, total votes one seventy-two, when you missed the store, one seventy-two, zero write-ins, eleven undervotes, zero overall. State Representative District Sixty Democrat, total votes twelve, write-ins twelve, undervote one seventy-one. Democrat Board of Supervisors. Um, District One, fifty-five votes, fifty-four for AJ, one write-in, eight hundred. County Board of Supervisors District Three Democrat. Eight total votes, eight write-ins, forty-one undervotes. County Treasurer Democrat, seven total votes, seven write-ins and a hundred and seventy-six undervotes. Total votes for County Reporter Democrat, seven, seven write-ins, one seventy-six undervote. County Attorney Democrat, she's the last one, total votes for, write-in for, undervote one seventy-nine. Those things that may have, may be of interest is there were. Majority of them were scatterings. For write-ins, um, supervisors, um, District One. There were, anything that gets over five percent, it has, the name has to be on the report, so the names that are on the report for Supervisor One were blank. Dan Gordon, AJ Stone. Why they do that, I don't know, Merlin Bartz, you know, Slowbird, I couldn't make out one of them, Melanie Sully and Mark. Her, Kirk Schleider. For Board Supervisors, number three, it's um blank, had seven, didn't even write a name. Enos had six, question mark, I have no idea what they were, two, Vance Lowman two, and Lois Crane Lawler two. On the Democrat's side, we had enough for State Representative District Sixty, it adds, it gets to five percent really quick when there's only twelve votes. So we had blank, Jim, James Bergy, Burger Burger, whatever.
I think, I'm not sure what he.
I haven't, I haven't straightened my head. Jane Bloomingdale, Carol J Burgo, Tim Knudsen, Thomas Ferrova, and Michael Shab. Board of Supervisors District Three, we have Enos Harlan, Heligerson, Craig Talk, and another one I couldn't make out. That is the election. And guys get to sign, you only have to do, only have to do federal and state and one of the copies, but those two I need all the signatures on all. And if you wanna wait until after we adjourn.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
Then you don't have to watch, you guys sign.
Sign, okay, alright. I don't think Melissa's on there today. Oh, Melissa, you on there?
I am.
Okay, anything for us?
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for attending that meeting with Architect last week, and um, if you have any uh, comments about what they sent in our email. You'd like to hear back from us um by Wednesday.
Okay. Looked good to me.
Yeah.
Interesting again, yes, very good. You can just pique somebody's interest.
For sure.
Great, you have a good plan, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for setting that up.
You bet.
Okay. Uh, Chris is not on, I don't believe.
We'll see.
Okay, extend more to him on weekends.
Oh. That's just the resolution amendment. To the resolution we had, so we would just amend it, the resolution would get a new number being the date we amended it.
And I don't have a resolution yet.
That's, it's, yeah, I'll get it. We'll put the actual resolution with the new number.
Okay.
Or next week, because I said it'll just be an amendment, but basically what it is, it changes that resolution number to the date you amended it.
Right. Okay. Alright. Yeah, you wanna be here next week.
Yeah.
So what do you do, go to June thirtieth or something?
Twenty-seven.
Because you'll still get it done before it expires, right?
Right.
Yeah, let's forget, so yeah, let's forget for the twenty-seventh. It's twenty-seventh.
Department of.
Yeah, I got a list. Um. Good, kinda like Rich, um, we are reviewing our control procedures with gas prices like they are, we are gonna implement a few things right now, but I won't discuss them in open meeting, just so. Yeah. We keep what we are doing on our patrol confidential. We did um send one juvenile to detention last week, there's a chance for another juvenile going this week. The reason I bring that up is we don't really say where to go, but we're still having problems with them wanting to descend to Waterloo.
I was gonna ask.
I got that straightened out, I finally figured out who I should have been talking to, I should have been talking to Shauna, she called me last week. And she got it straightened out, because one had been checked in the night before at Waterloo, and I said, no. Somebody somewhere along the line got confused again that we have agreements with both. And I said, no, we don't, we just have with Eldora, send them there, so she was gonna take them out of one, send them to the other, and then there was another person that was going that way too.
Okay.
So I think we're good now.
We entered our agreement.
Yeah, wild, yeah.
Hopefully, because last week it was a mess.
And when they, yeah, when they go there, we end up getting charged a hundred and seventy-five bucks a day versus the fifty, so we don't want them to go there.
Okay.
But if they don't have beds or something, that might still be a possibility.
So that still goes, that still.
Still go through Eldora.
Eldora. Contract out, but it's usually, Eldora usually has plenty, we usually take.
Good.
Not, I mean, interrupters, but yeah, thank you.
Um, it's fair week, so my department, we're gonna be in and out of there all week, so as far as staffing up here, we'll keep what we are. We do have all the weather stuff set, I've gotta get up and get the uh, information for the concessions up there, just so we have that information in case that bad weather. And you gonna talk about Verkata, our meeting?
I certainly can.
Okay, I'll leave that for you then.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's it, okay, thank you. Uh, so we did meet with Verkata virtually, Jim and I and Dan um for doing door controls and camera systems throughout the courthouse, the public health building. Treasurer's Office.
Locks on the jail doors.
Locks, that'd be lock controls for all the doors except for uh conservation, we're not gonna do anything with that building, because hopefully it'll just go away. So the design is set, we did uh, we did change a few things from their original design, added a few things here and there. I did, uh, we did go over and uh, we're gonna put uh door controls on the outside entrances for public health, those were included in in the proposal. Uh, but now the design is done, now they'll come back to us with a quote here probably, and I would imagine here, probably next month. Um, it's gonna be fairly substantial, and I think word tensions were, were, would be for upper funds for this. But the the test machines that we've got up cameras are phenomenal, uh, can we can see them uh down?
When's, when's that gonna get done?
Well, that's, you know, we got some supply chain issues there, we've got some switches that we're waiting on, they're they're talking November of twenty twenty-two before we get those switches, so I did dive into my uh. Bone pile of stuff that I've I've got sitting that, you know, I've replaced, and we're probably gonna repurpose those uh until those other switches show up, so possibly.
So you can get it going and then switch that stuff up when the new comes in.
Yeah, the intention would be, um, we do have Jerry from SCI coming up, uh, SCI does internal cabling and wiring, uh, so you'd have to get a book from those folks for. For cabling and wiring for the cameras and the door systems, so, and I'm gonna meet, actually Jerry's gonna be at our conference here uh this week, so I'm gonna be with Jerry, talk to him a little bit. But uh, they do a phenomenal job, they're, they're really good at what they do. Um, and then I did tell you guys about Duo will be implemented here pretty quick, the UV keys are in uh for those folks that wanna use those, they're just a little. Fob that has a lot of numbers on them and and it's just, you know, you you put the numbers in, you know, where you go on your issue. Um, other than that, I think that's, uh, I did talk to Jeff on the phones, he's gonna get back to me, I think we've got a little bit of supply issue there too as well. Uh, I can, but hopefully we'll close in report to them. Alright, I cover that, okay? Alright.
So we might be rolling stuff, some stuff for next year's budget, then we might need an amendment, maybe that's later, we can deal with that.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yep, uh, so I did look in the uh, the minutes for the safety meeting a couple of months ago, it it was supposed to be today, sorry, I. I didn't have it on my calendar. I don't think there's any pressing stuff, we can schedule one for a couple of weeks, I guess, if we need to, and I'll let uh, Jim.
I'm sitting here, Mark, thank you for letting, or you're talking the other, you're talking the other.
The other, the uh, non-county Jim.
We we wanna stay on top of it, helps with the premiums, so we wanna get a couple of weeks probably.
That will go for the uh twenty-seventh of June, I think.
Okay.
Unless you guys have a full schedule that morning.
I.
No.
Not only follow the normal.
Not as of yet, anyway.
So.
Yeah, and then like the sheriff said there, you know, it's fair week, so I will have our command trailer up there. And then we are doing a uh, thing with the uh, it's with the Worth Alert system, there's actually the ability to. People can text Worth County Iowa Fair to that six seven two eight three, and they can get uh. Specific information, alerts, you know, auto-generated from the National Weather Service. Specific to the fair location, um, or if we should happen to have like a missing child or something like that, and we wanna put all information on that, we can. Just to people that opt in for that, so we'll have signage and stuff for that, that's another tool we can use. Be there all week, weekend for that too, so. That's about all I have for today.
Okay, well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now I guess we'll go Supervisor Weekly.
Uh, we had that. You know, that co-site planning strategy meeting, and I thought that was, like we said earlier with Melissa, went very well, I thought the new map that they we did send out looked really good. I think that's moving along really nice. I had North Iowa Children's Alliance, and of course, there we just go through the budget, finally got the final policy manual done. And other than that, we're still looking for a consumer board opening, which is a parent, a guardian, a grandparent. That has a, somebody that's birthed the kindergarten, we are in dire need of somebody.
Good.
You guys can come up with anybody that's got a.
That'd be interested.
Yeah.
How many meetings does the person do?
Once a month. Second Thursday of every month.
And they're where, or they zoom?
Always zoom. Because it's Jackie Miller, uh, Fertile is the director, so.
Makes life easier.
What's that?
Makes life easier, people travel to. Do what they do it.
Yep.
Is it during the work, work day then, or?
Thursday from like one to two thirty-three o'clock, one to two usually is what it comes down to. Because she had laryngitis this last time, it was a nineteen minute meeting.
I just wanted to get that out there, if anybody's watching the Zoom.
Yeah, we could use, yeah, if you're a, if you're a grandparent or a guardian of a, primary guardian of a child or a parent that. Got somebody that isn't in kindergarten yet, like to sit on that board.
I uh, yeah, sat with the, when we're back on the plan out there, which was a very good meeting, um, I also had a shut-off watershed comprehensive plan committee that I'm on. We got all the, we did get all the paperwork from the V N R, we're gonna get that signed back to this next week here, we're gonna get in our comprehensive plan done, so. Get that one up and running and hopefully. Start putting in further grants here, and maybe, it'd probably be the next year before that happened, but. For any work and that, so they can be self-sustained, so. Um, that's all I have.
Same meetings there, them and also we had our special meeting Friday for, okay, the cams and stuff here, getting that all straightened out. I did have a whole day of conference with the workforce development board, um, kind of a training conference slash conference, um. Just a lot of interesting information on there, and some speakers in there that, it kind of predicted the workforce uh shortages that we're experiencing here in Iowa, and. Maybe some of the things we can do through workforce development to hopefully maybe alleviate some of those problems going forward, but uh. There's an organization also we got on there too, and uh, they got a virtual, new virtual tool that uh allows students to kind of go do the on-down training, say like construction or uh. Uh, lineman, things like that, they can go on and actually try it out virtually to see if it's something that'd be interesting. Line man, things like that, they can go on and actually try it out virtually to see if it's something that'd be interesting. Simple thing like running a grinder, like working in a fabrication shop. Sawing boards and building a house and actually, you know, putting the transformer on and stuff and. I can get killed during the process if they do it wrong, but it's. They've been having some good results with that, some of the community colleges are starting to look at that, so when they get these kids coming in. Instead of maybe just getting them into the generals, if they have an interest in actually physically working and in doing jobs that pay very well. Which huge shortage of workers in all these jobs, constructions, you know, fabrication. So that's, it's expensive when they, every pair, it's basically a pair of glasses, I think.
So Oculus.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is, I know it was like a thousand dollars or more for a shot.
Suddenly work up a sweater.
They say, I think like, say like, when they're hanging that transformer, if they do it wrong and hook it up wrong, they actually, the one guy wasn't exactly sure, but I think there's like a vibration feeling. And the screen just goes, boom, you're done, you're dead, and then you gotta start over, so if you don't complete the training, you gotta start over, so it's, it's pretty interesting.
It's very realistic.
Yeah, that's what they said, I mean, I mean, they kinda did a demo on the screen, but it wasn't this, you know, you actually, if you've been to the physically good meeting. Never have a supper that night and you could actually try that stuff out, they had a pair of glasses, so you could actually physically try that out, but I just attended by Zoom, so. But yeah, they, you know, the big reason why we have a workforce is is our generation, not you, you're starting, I know, you need to have more kids. Only had a couple of years, you know, we didn't do as well as our parents or grandparents did after World War Two, you know, they put a lot of people in the workforce. And we did not put as many people in the workforce and that is why we are having a shortage. You know, and also the state Iowa needs to figure out how to make some of our small towns grow a little more job opportunities. How do we make it more welcoming, they said Minnesota, you know, barring the cities, barring the cities in Minneapolis or Des Moines. Des Moines is one of a very good growing region and stuff, but you know, how do you make the small towns grow in Minnesota has been achieving that a little bit. So their population has been growing, Iowa's grown a little bit, it's pretty stagnant really, so and and we're facing that worker shortage too. So hopefully, between all the partners we have with our workforce development, which is all your factories, all your, you know, there are partners in workforce development. It was maybe that training was based more towards them, how do you, you know, but it's also based towards the county and the cities and. How do we, how do we do that, so? So I had that. And then I also dealt with Cedar Watershed District, they had the annual meeting and a regular meeting and we did not have a call for either one. And it was a virtual option, I mean, so I don't know what, what is gonna take the peak interest. They were, they were looking for their annual election officers and stuff and they just had one person will be the chair and they're trying to fill the other two slots. Vice Chair, Secretary Treasurer, the guy that's been doing it would like to step away and go to other, other avenues while still being a board member, but. He wanted to alleviate some of those responsibilities, so. They'll be working on that, so, you know, that's all I had, I guess, so. Anything else for next week's agenda? Second, any further discussion?